I would like to call forward this evening, this February 1st, 2017, regular meeting of the Quincy City Council. If Madam Clerk could call the roll.
Counselor King.
Present.
Counselor Pro.
Present.
Counselor Vaughn.
Present.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Forrest.
Present.
Counselor Liang. President. Counselor Calmucci.
Just so you know.
President Finn.
Present. If I could, I'd like to ask everyone to join and stand in a moment of silence and a prayer for divine guidance, especially remembering our then-in-women in uniform serving here and abroad. Thank you, and I ask you to join, remain standing, and join with me. I pledge allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Father who governs this nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Before I do anything else, I'd like to take a moment to point out the fact that I'm not -- Counselor President personal abuse. She is actually -- part of her day job requires her this evening to be in Washington, D.C., and again, she's unable to attend this meeting today. The second thing I do want to do, though, is to take a moment to recognize, I notice he's here in the chamber with us this evening, the former mayor of the city of Quincy and former city councilor Joe Rann. Longing to be up all through years of service. If I could ask the clerk to please read the disclaimer relating the open meeting law and the audio and video taking of proceedings at this meeting.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this proceeding or may transmit to the committee through a medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings will be transmitted, albeit when the proceedings are perceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged in this hall.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the first item on the agenda this evening?
Number one on the agenda, 2017-25, order disposition of Fifty Seville Ave.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Mayor's Representative, Chris Walker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, if I may, before reference to the committee, just to give a little background on the first two items on the agenda, which are somewhat related. Item number one is the disposition of Fifty Seville Ave., which is a house most of you know is currently, together with Fifty-Eighth Seville Ave., is owned to the administrative offices for the Public Buildings Department. Currently, those buildings are not efficient. They don't have space for records, and they've got staff between both buildings. So we'll be proposing the disposition of Fifty Seville Ave., which brings us to the second piece of this request, item number two on the agenda, which is the acquisition of Seventy-Four Greenfield Street, which is a historic Victorian home that is currently being sold by nonprofit agency York Inc. It's kind of an offer, first dibs to the street on this property from the nonprofit agency before it goes out to market. The mayor's proposing to serve this building, which is on the National Historic Register of National Register of Historic Places, and have moved public buildings into this facility. Site is own residence big and is up to about sixteen thousand square feet total space, so it does hit the open market. It's a very good chance to be a pretty substantial housing development on that site. Funding for this request will come from the capital assets account, which is existing today. That account has eight hundred thousand dollars in it, thanks to the sale of two non-utilized city properties, one on Chapman Street and one on Quincy Shore Drive. So essentially, what we're proposing, the mayor's proposing to do is to replace two properties which the city sold that weren't utilized by the city and weren't useful to the city, two property that we think has hold of a useful purpose and one that serves a preservation avenue as well. Those money in, those monies in the capital asset accounts are specifically for public buildings that cannot drop into the general funds, cannot use as for anything else but for public buildings. So that's the basics on those two properties, and we look forward to that for the discussion committee.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. The Chair recognizes Counselor Vaughn.
Make a motion to refer to the committee.
A motion to refer to finance, seconded by Counselor Vaughn. All those in favor? Aye. Item number two, Madam Clerk.
Item number two, 2017-26, appropriation of seven hundred, seventy-five thousand dollars for acquisition of Seventy-Four Greenfield Street.
Chair recognizes Counselor Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Acting President. In the same vein, I'd like to make a motion to refer this finance committee as well.
We have a motion to move to finance, seconded by Counselor Vaughn. All those in favor? Aye. So moves. Item number three.
2017-27, appropriation for eighty-two thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars for the supervisory union salary increases.
Chair recognizes Mr. Walker, Mayor's Office.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Just very briefly, this is similar to a number of other appropriation requests that have come before the party in the last several months, reflecting contracted contractual agreements with various bargaining units within the city. This is for the superior union salary increases. This money was appropriated in the budget. As everyone knows, this was a reserve for appropriation. Budget represents a one percent increase for the previous fiscal year, two percent increase for the current fiscal year.
Thank you. And given the fact, as a reminder, obviously, that this was something that exists in the budget at times, contracts are misinterpreted, as the purpose of reserve appropriation, I'd certainly entertain a motion that we pass that this evening. Chair recognizes Counselor Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can't really add much perspective to that. I believe the mayor's representative did a great job outlining exactly what it was. More importantly than when we took a vote, it was a budget for the FY seventeen. However, this was part of the reserve for appropriation, so with that, I am going to move approval.
We have a move approval, seconded by Counselor Calmucci. No discussion on the motion. Chair recognizes Counselor Calmucci.
Thank you. Through you to the Mayor's Representative, or perhaps the Order. This was the exact amount that we appropriated, under the budget book in front of me.
Counselor, it was an overall. Really, Mr. President, I'm sorry. There was an overall number reflecting what we needed for all the unions based upon projection of one percent to two percent. This eighty-two thousand reflects that.
That reflects that.
So did we come in above, at, above the total number as we resolved, I think this was the second or third contract that was all?
Yeah, we still have a few to go. No reason to believe at this time that we will be above appropriation request. Again, the amount was based upon what had been settled at that time, the contracts, and the contracts throughout the system are requesting those identical increases of one percent for fiscal 2017 and a two percent for fiscal 2017.
I can only imagine the difficulty of having to negotiate with the remaining unions when there's clear, a chunk of money that we have set aside for the raises to suggest you can't go to some amount when they know the budget's set aside and had them out. But it probably works the other way as well, because they know we can't, you're unlikely to negotiate a contract that goes above that set amount, so it's, you're kind of shooting in the middle there, I imagine.
I guess for you, Mr. President, I'm not going to, I'm a little reluctant to get into negotiating tactics.
There wasn't a question to answer. I don't know why you're talking right now. That was more of a statement than anything. But these are tied, the supervisory union salaries are tied to the, to those that you supervise, with those that are similar.
Correct. And supervisory, and for folks that don't know, House members may not know, supervisory is a clerical union in City Hall. It represents mostly folks in City Hall and some of the other administrative departments. So there's one union that represents one level of clerical workers, and this is the union that represents the other level of clerical workers within the city.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Chair recognizes Counselor Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just on this, so we're going to retrospect this back to 2016, July 1st, am I correct? That is right. Through you, Mr. President, that is correct. And furthermore, into the next year, are we going with seventeen-two percent? What are we doing in eighteen, or what is happening in eighteen? Eighteen, in these contracts, it's a two percent as well. And is it further than that as well, as in nineteen-twenty? A lot of these agreements, Counselor, there have been two joint agreements that have been settled concurrently. One's three-year, we're only allowed to do three-year contracts at a time, so there's a three-year contract, and a two-year contract that follows that we've, or a two-year contract and a three-year contract, I'm sorry. There was a discussion, there was an appetite amongst bargaining units to create a level of predictability going forward, so between the mayor's work, Human Resources Department, their work, and the bargaining units, there was an agreement to come up with two separate bargaining agreements, which will take us through five years, which legitarily is helpful because it gives us a good predictor of what's going to happen with the company. Just elaborate a little bit on the unions in general across the city of all the different departments. Are you trying to keep kind of that level of same increments, one, two, two, is that kind of cross, what were you trying to, trying to stay at for our unions as well? Without getting too far into detail, Counselor, without getting anything negotiated started, yes. You know, in fact, that's something the mayor's been clear. There are things we can talk about on the negotiating table, but not necessarily the cost of living increases that we provide our employees, which are well deserved. So the financial part of it is something that everyone is well aware of, has been well aware of. If those issues can't be resolved, there's a process that takes place. We've been very fortunate over the last eight years to have such great cooperation and coordination with the folks that work for the city. Hope and expect that that will continue, but there are always. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing that the clerk could call the roll.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Pro. Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Calmucci.
Yes.
President Finn.
Yes.
Chief members.
Next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item is number four on the agenda, 2017-28, appropriation for three million five hundred and forty-two thousand fifteen dollars for MSBA accelerated reprieve program for the ads we have Eastwoodville, Marymount, Colston Elementary Schools.
Chair recognizes Counselor Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is obviously a follow-up appropriation to a conversation in this body back, I was trying to put it, a couple of months ago, regarding a statement of interest for the city to allow some approach of the MSBA to target these immediate improvements at the school. I'll make a motion to waive, excuse me, refer to committee under the guise of proper advertising in the place.
A motion to refer to Finance Committee and refer for advertising. There's a second. Seconded by Counselor Forrest. Seeing that the clerk could please call the roll.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Pro. Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Calmucci. President Finn.
Yes.
Chief members.
I wonder why I called the roll on that. Item, next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item is number five, 2017-29, ordinance amended municipal code Title V, Chapter 5.08, gas stations, Section 5.08.00.
It's been a motion to waive the reading by Counselor Lanning, seconded by Counselor Calmucci. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair recognizes Counselor Liang.
Thank you. This is an ordinance that I know that we looked at in the past on the council. I'd like to put it into the ordinance committee to open up for discussion and advertise properly. So I refer to the ordinance committee.
A motion to refer to ordinance, we have a second. Seconded by Counselor Calmucci. All those in favor? Opposed? Extinction is done, so again, move that to ordinance committee. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item is number six, 2017-30, pertaining to first-time homebuyer program preference of veterans.
Chair recognizes Counselor Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to start off by saying this resolution pertaining to first-time homebuyer program preference for veterans is very near and dear to my heart. Having had a grandfather, World War II veteran, U.S. Navy, a father, U.S. Air Force, Vietnam veteran, to have some type of program here in Quincy is very important to me, also again, the veterans chairing. Also, before I get into this, I also want to recognize George Nicholson, which is Director of Veteran Services, is here tonight. Thank you for coming. We had a meeting for the Quincy Veterans Council this past Thursday. I got a meeting to speak to move this forward. You know, this is something that I've been working on for quite a while, for a few months now, trying to figure out how I could, I could give something back to the citizens of Quincy that put their lives on the line and a place for, before it was World War II veterans, it was Korean veterans, Vietnam veterans. Now we're in a different phase of Gulf War veterans, Iraqi, Afghan veterans that are coming back to the city of Quincy. This will be an incentive for them. Hopefully, this will move forward and they can, they can capitalize on this. It's pertaining basically to closing costs, buying a new house, buying a new condominium, and I'm going to go into the specific points here, how important it really, really is, you know, some of the, some of the value systems have kind of shifted a little bit, and I feel that sometimes the veterans are not really taking the line, they're kind of pushed aside, and I feel, I feel strong about that phrase that's taken here tonight in this chamber, that sometimes maybe you should be thinking about these veterans that put their lives on the line, and take a close look at that, please. Since the birth of our nation, American patriots have stepped forward to serve our country and defend our way of life. With honor and distinction, servicemen and women have taken up arms to win our independence, preserve our union, secure our freedom. Our veterans are brave and selfless individuals who, when duty called, willingly put themselves in harm ways to defend the lives and liberties of others. Their abiding patriotism and enduring commotion to the ideals on which the United States was founded can never fail to inspire us, serving as teachers, engineers, government employees, parents, and other important classes. These patriots have made contributions to civilian life that serve us as testament to their dedication to the welfare of our country. We have a solemn obligation to serve our veterans as well as they served us. Therefore, be resolved that the Quincy Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee and the Quincy Home Consortium are urged to alter their existing first-time homebuyer program regulations to include a veteran's preference that would waive the closing costs for all veterans of the U.S. Armed Forces, active-duty military, and spouses of all who live here throughout our American Union. And that the planning and community development adopt the Mass Housing's Operation Welcome Home Program. I'd like to put that in the form of motion.
Absolutely. Do we have a motion from Counselor Vaughn?
Again, second.
Seconded by Counselor Forrest. Can I ask, please, no more seconds coming at the body this evening. I have enough time to talk with these folks here. Seconded by Counselor Forrest, Chair recognizes Counselor Forrest.
Thank you, Counselor Finn. Counselor Vaughn, thank you for bringing this forward. Counselor Finn and I both serve on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We actually have had a meeting with our Mass Operation Home Front probably a month ago, and actually have this procedure moving forward already in our committee, so I know Counselor Finn and I were at that meeting, and I know our planning director is not here this evening, but this is something that has had some forward progress already by the committee, so just wanted to report that in. And I believe Reverend Bennett, did I see you in the audience? Is also a member of our Affordable Housing Trust Committee and always a strong advocate, so thanks for your presence this evening. I'd like to second the motion.
Chair recognizes on the motion, Counselor Calmucci.
Thank you. Obviously, good job to Counselor Vaughn, well-put statements about the purpose of what we're doing, but is this, and I'm not trying to be, you know, fly the picnic here, but is this something that needs to be done? I mean, is there a, is there a waitlist, or is there veterans being turned away?
Nope. There is actually funds available for anybody right now through the Affordable First-Time Home Buyer Program, so that is, there is no pending anyone being held up currently, and for more information, call the planning department directly. Sean Glenn, if I'd be of quick contact.
Thank you.
I would like to point out that Mass Housing has a specific process, which again, Counselor Vaughn has referenced in this, in terms of the Operation Welcome Home Program. Essentially, what it's doing is it's really covering the closing costs specifically through a deferred type of loan that they can enter into as part of it, and again, just providing very luxury, because again, even if you're a homebuyer in terms of getting to, you know, the financing is still the critical piece. And I can't remember exactly, but it's very little that actually has to be put down in relation to the Operation Welcome Home Program, which makes it well-suited particularly to veterans who might be returning, and this is their first home-time homebuyer opportunity.
If I could, if I could, thank you, Mr. Acting President. I actually.
Believe I'm the acting.
Mr. President. I actually used this program when I bought my home in Quincy when I was a first-time homebuyer. It's very helpful. I think anyone who goes through that process, buying their first home, you are literally clawing together every penny you have in the world, so even programs, especially programs like this help a lot. They go a long, long way towards being able to achieve equal ownership. We often talk up here, or I often talk up here, as we do some of my other colleagues, about the importance of affordable housing in the city of Quincy, and how that is becoming a rarer and rarer thing. We just talked about it with the downtown development presentation earlier. So programs like this, I think, are just of the utmost importance, and we should be making them available to, obviously, to veterans, that's fantastic, but to everyone who wants to own a home in the city of Quincy, because it's that, it's that security knowing that you are going to live somewhere and stay somewhere and plant your roots that makes, you know, our community great, and you can really set up stakes and raise your family and grow with the community. So it's, it's a great effort by Counselor Vaughn, I'm happy to support it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Given the fact that this is a resolution, I have particularly no difficulty for one to vote pass this this evening and refer it to the Director of Planning and Community Development as well as to the mayor. So for the discussion, we have a motion to pass by Counselor Vaughn, and seconded by my Counselor Forrest. Seeing that for the discussion, the clerk could call the roll.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Pro.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Calmucci.
Yes.
President Finn.
Yes.
Chief members.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Vaughn. Thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Number seven.
Objection?
Two thousand.
Objection, Judge.
All right, Judge. We have an objection, which means that the matter may not come before us, that it will be tabled until the next meeting. Again, essentially, it's off the table for further discussion this evening. Again, our rules of the council allow for any member to object to something coming before us. I have long, given I agree, fought to protect that right, so next item, Madam Clerk.
Number eight on the agenda, 2017-32, resolved creation of a special access revenue account in the city.
Chair recognizes.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President. For you, this is basically a resolution, just a follow-up to some of the discussions that we had pertaining to the downtown financing thereof. In particular, what I was citing was a report produced by RKG that essentially shows surplus in DIF revenues. And as the process stands now, essentially, the surplus is basically dropped into the general accounts, and my thought was, is there, is there even the ability to create essentially a sub-account in the DIF account, say that for five times, that would essentially capture this excess revenue and, in my mind, use as a, use as an additional tool to mitigate any risk? I mean, as we all know, when you want to take a large construction project, for example, the financing of a parking garage to the tune of thirty, forty, fifty million dollars is assumed and not assumed the risk. So my thought was, I just wanted to follow up on the point I had made when we were having the discussion, to see if there's been any advancement in terms of getting to the bottom of that. I don't know if Director Kavanaugh or the Order have any, have anything to add to that, but I just wanted to keep the conversation going because there was a noticeable amount of excessive positive revenue.
What do you say?
I have had a conversation with Director of Municipal Finance, and we have been in touch with the outside auditors to discuss the possibility of this. To date, we have not received an award back from them, so once we have some specifics, I will head back to the council.
Thank you, Madam Auditor.
You're welcome.
You know, you've been a pleasure, like always, to work with in on this particular item, but again, you know, I would ask my colleagues for their support, because I feel it's just another tool in the city's toolbox to help, you know, protect the interests of the taxpayers. So with that, I would move past.
Motion to pass a resolution, seconded by Counselor Calmucci. This would be referred to Finance.
I think it's handed to the mayor's office, right? The mayor.
The Director of Finance.
Director of Finance. To the mayor. Well, again, in order for it to be in the calendar to, so you can follow up later, it probably should be referred to Finance Committee.
Correct.
On the motion, Counselor Calmucci.
So I have a question to ask, but are we voting against tonight? Do you see him voting against ahead?
It's my understanding that he wishes to, yeah.
Yeah.
But again, because it has something that we're asking to be done, it should be in before us.
I just want to ask perhaps to the Order. So the DIF account, first of all, I think this is, this is great, you know, it's about mitigating the rest, which I'm a big fan of, when we're talking about, I didn't want to do with the downtown. Anytime you can mitigate the rest of the taxpayer, you should be all over it, but, and that's why I support it. But the DIF account, so it's essentially almost like a fictitional, we've created this geographic boundary that we call the DIF district, right? And then we, and then we, is there actually, do all the tax revenues actually go into the account, or they go into the general fund, and then we keep track of what is coming out of the DIF area, and we call it the DIF account?
I believe what happens is the, the DIF, within the DIF district, the revenue that's generated goes into the general fund. At the end of each fiscal year, we receive, it's like it's an accounting methodology, let me do a journal entry, we get this information from RKG on what revenues were received within the DIF district. That money's, part of it goes to pay our debt service, and all of those all done through the sinking fund that was set up a few years ago, and then the rest of it goes back in as general fund revenue.
What's the sinking fund?
That is a particular fund. It's just, it's just really technically a name for a particular fund, but it's money, it's the fund we use to do the transfer and the transfer out.
All right, so it's the money, so, so the DIF account kind of is just an accounting account, right?
Correct. The particular DIF fund that we have, that basically is just a fund with the money that we have borrowed in the DIF. That doesn't have any revenues coming in or out of it. That doesn't have any revenues coming in or out of it.
Right, no, no, I get that, that account that we're actually taking, which is almost dry from the very beginning that it originally started at, right?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And so, perhaps, drew you in rather to Council Crowe. So what you're seeking to do here is set up kind of an overage account, almost, like swiping away an excess revenue that comes in and actually putting it in, almost like a trust fund to cover any shortfalls in the downtown in the future? That's the thing, right?
So if we use the terminology sinking funds, which is basically transport the sinking fund from the general fund to the DIF account? And the reason I say that is because if it drops into the general fund, the sinking fund is going to be from wrong. Essentially, it becomes part of the metric and will be in free cash, right?
Yes, so what happens is at the end of the fiscal year, we do a general entry within the sinking fund. A portion of that money goes towards the debt service. The other portion, I believe, is then generally back into the general fund as general fund revenue, and that does come into free cash.
So my thinking, Council, is if it's, if it's, money's generated through valuation or generated through RDP district, I just have a strong feeling that those money should stay because the DIF account was created to be its own entity. So why wouldn't any overage be part of that entity?
Right, I agree with that. And I think that makes sense to me, because then it's more money that's gone for any shortfall later on. I support it. I just want to understand a little bit better. I'm sure we'll discuss it at a later time with Mark and the rest of the council. Thank you, Scott.
So the motion is in place, so all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Did I say that? I wanted to go back for a second to explain, because first off, it's very important, I need to say thank you to all the people who came out in reference to item seven. I know that there's. If I could, and folks, again, those who are opposed, those who support, anyone who came out, I say thank you. However, what I really wanted is just to stress, because people are sitting here, is that Council Harris invoked Rule twenty-three, which is within his right to do. And I just want to, in case anybody's confused, it's not going to be discussed this evening. It will not be discussed until the next meeting. And I want to read Rule twenty-three. "Any ordinance, order, or resolution may be passed through all of its stages of legislation at one session, provided that no member of the council objects thereto. But if any member of the council objects, the measure shall be postponed for that meeting. Rule twenty-three cannot be suspended." That's the rule that we're operating under this evening. And again, Council Harris is well within his rights to invoke that. Again, this is not turning into a political rallying, it's not going to move forward that way. I, again, thank everybody for their participation. You'll certainly have notice when the next meeting's going to be, and then if it's, again, on the agenda. But this is not a dialogue, again. This is not a business. This body operates under a set of rules. The discussion will, again, this is a resolution, it will be presented later. So with that, Madam Ford, the next final item, agenda. Perhaps we could recess for a moment, there are people, again, it's going to take time to clear. Again, we need quiet.
I don't know, dude, but I'm telling you, like, Harris is funny.
Basically, I don't know what that we're talking about. That's why I turned that one over. That's why the best writers, not only that, but.
Thanks for that.
It's not like he was playing, sir.
Interesting.
Fun, huh?
Oh, yeah. Right back in there, they were kind of verbally arguing it out, two sides. Dude, who's usually, I see him downstairs, he was keeping it from duking it out. Well, you know, it would have been cool if I was calling. Only one more year, isn't it? Please, like, call this, call this meeting back to order.
Thank you. Again, the last item on the agenda.
Number nine, two thousand seventeen thirty-three, give nine hundred fifty dollars of berries voted for the DIF program.
Chair recognizes Council Crowe. Second. All those in favor? Excuse me, we need to call the roll on this specifically.
Council King.
Yes.
Council Crowe.
Yes.
Council Vaughn.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Present.
Council LaFarge.
Yes.
Council Liang.
Present.
Council Calhoun.
Yes.
President Finn.
Yes.
Six members.
Then it's our regular agenda. We actually have minutes from the February sixth meeting.
Really?
Give that a chance, because we have a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve the minutes, seconded by Council DeBona. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Can any, Madam Ford, communications or reports from the mayor and other city officers and city boards?
Yes, thank you. Order six, Council Harris, remove no parking at Fifty Standard Road. That will go to ordinance advertising.
A motion to ordinance and advertising by Council Harris, seconded by Council LaFarge, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's it for communications. Do we have any unfinished business from the preceding meeting? Madam Ford? Okay, moving on, reports and committees. Chair recognizes Council LaFarge.
Thank you. Two things from the ordinance committee. Earlier this evening, we had a council meeting relative to Council Order two thousand sixteen dash two eighty-five, land disposition agreement, a parcel H one in the Hancock Law. That matter has been continued to March sixth at six thirty, we continue that discussion. Secondly, I'd like to make a motion relative to current committee, Council Order two thousand seventeen dash zero two zero, the ordinance committee, mending Title Ten, vehicles and traffic, motorcycle restrictions after midnight, that that matter be relieved. The motion is that that matter be relieved for further consideration by the ordinance committee at the request of Council Harris. Motion to relieve, Council Order two thousand seventeen dash zero two.
Correct. We have a motion by Council LaFarge, seconded by Council Harris. With that, I imagine we place that on the file.
We are relieving from further consideration.
Okay.
We're no longer.
Right. We could, again, any discussion of the motion? If we could have a roll, Madam Ford.
Council King.
Yes.
Council Crowe. Council Vaughn.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council LaFarge.
Yes.
Council Liang.
Yes.
Council Calhoun.
Nope.
President Finn.
Yes.
Seven members.